How are you?
Good.
Very good.
All right, we're going to get started tonight. We're going to jump right into student recognitions. So I will pass it over to Ms. Rodriguez Gomez.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am so honored to begin our evening with the sharing of student recognitions for the month. It is always certainly the most exciting part of our presentations. I would ask that when you're called up for your special moment, please remain at the podium so we can take a very quick photo and you can enjoy your moments. Also immediately following the student recognitions, we will jump right into the district's Black History Month presentation that we're also very proud of. Having said that, I would ask Principal Bartlett to please start us off with sharing regarding the Brant selection for Student of the Month, Ms. Lola Franceschi, Grade Three.
So at this time, I would like to call to the podium Ms. Lola Franceschi, the Brant Elementary School Student of the Month for January 2019. Lola was nominated for Student of the Month by her homeroom teacher, Ms. Tainter, with the help of two former students of the month, Evan and Tanya. Both Evan and Tanya agreed that Lola is a kind, hard worker, a friend to all, and very caring. Ms. Tainter said, "I agree that Lola has shown all the qualities of a Student of the Month through her friendliness, positive attitude, dedication to her academics, and kind-hearted nature. She is the perfect student to represent the Brant Bears as the Student of the Month. As principal, Lola was one of the very first third grade students I had the chance to interact with when she came down to the office way back in September for morning announcements. Since that day, I look forward to seeing her in the hallways for her quiet smile and hello or a high five. In a watershed moment for me, Lola has the unique distinction of being the very first student at Brant whose name I remembered. Lola is no stranger to the spotlight. In addition to being nominated for this honor presently by Ms. Tainter, Lola was the Student of the Month last year in Mrs. Gavin's class. She also has an upcoming part in Matilda through the Garden Street Dance School in which she will be playing the part of Alice. Lola was also part of the ensemble group in the Hoboken School District's production of Peter Pan. I mentioned her smile already, but Ms. Tainter went on to say, "Lola has an infectious smile that will cause everyone around her to be happy. While Lola can appear quiet, she is full of energy. She is always asking questions to better understand, thinking of ways to help improve the classroom, and always putting others' needs ahead of her own. Every morning Lola comes into the classroom, unstacks the chairs unprompted, helps the teacher, and assists other students who need help getting ready to start their day. She's an incredible leader during literature circle, listening to her team's needs, being respectful and prepared to lead discussions. Lola is a friend to all. She always asks different students to be her partner, often asking Ms. Tainter, 'Can we have a group of three to make way for someone who might be without a partner?'" She has shown so much growth from the start of the year in her academics and participation, is always willing to make her work the best quality. Lola is a positive hard worker, friend to all, and the best student to represent the Brant Bears. Lola is a member of the inaugural third grade Brant Bears basketball team of the Hoboken Recreation Department. She also enjoys musical theater, Irish dancing, and soccer. When asked what she wants to do for her career, Lola said, "It changes a lot, maybe an artist, a writer, a teacher, something that allows me to be creative." Upon being told she would receive this honor, Lola said, "I would like to thank my mom and dad for helping me understand and helping me achieve my goals." Congratulations to Lola Franceschi, the Joseph F. Brant School Student of the Month for January 2019.
And now I would ask Principal Baker to come up to the podium, and he will present his Student of the Month award to Kindergartner Ms. Claire Stanley.
Congratulations, Claire. I'd just like to start off with a quote from her kindergarten teacher, Ms. Aiello. "Claire Stanley is a fantastic student who always puts 100% effort into everything she does. She loves to be challenged with reading and math, but is especially interested in writing. She is a role model student who sets great examples for the rest of the class by following class rules and always doing her best. She has leadership abilities and loves to help her peers when they need it and also loves to help the teacher. Claire's favorite thing to do in school is to write stories. After school, she enjoys dance class and said she wants to be a Rockette when she grows up. She enjoys spending time with her little brother Leo and her new puppy, Marshall. As Claire's former physical education teacher and now principal, I would like to say Claire is an incredibly talented student who is a natural leader. Her kind ways and actions never go unnoticed. She receives multiple weekly kindness awards for her thoughtful actions at Calabro School. She raises her hand with confidence for every single challenging question and wants to be put to the test. As her former physical education teacher, she always exemplifies good sportsmanship and teamwork skills. Claire is without question a student who you want on your team to try to win a championship. It is my honor to nominate Claire Stanley for Student of the Month for Calabro School."
And now I'd ask Principal Dr. Pollins to come up and celebrate the Connors School selection, Ms. Jessica Santiago, Grade Four.
Jessica Santiago. Jessica Santiago is a dedicated and enthusiastic student and was nominated for Student of the Month by Ms. Schalls. Jessica asks thoughtful questions about topics discussed in class and extends the application of newly learned skills daily. Jessica has embraced the fourth grade this year, trying her hardest in reading, writing, math, and critical thinking. She is a dedicated student that challenges herself to extend her learning. Jessica, sorry, is a kind student who is dedicated to her family. She loves her parents and her siblings. She enjoys going to the mall with her dad, and she likes to play with her brother on his PS4. When she has time to relax, she likes to read The Diary of a Wimpy Kid and West Side School series. She would love to travel to Disney World with her brother, sister, and parents. Her favorite subject in school is art. She would like to attend Harvard University as she strives for a career in engineering. When asked why she would like to be an engineer, she shared that she could make things better for the world. She also wants to learn photography because she feels that there are so many beautiful things in the world to take pictures of. Jessica was excited when she was told that she would be receiving the honor of District Student of the Month for Connor School and could not wait to inform her mother. She knew her mother would be very happy because she worked really hard for it, and she is very proud of this award. When asked how she felt about the award in attending Connor School, Jessica replied, "I'm very excited because in the past I was not doing well, but my teachers, Ms. Schalls and Ms. Balding, have helped me, and I'm doing much better. When I think of Jessica, I think of the following Ralph Marston quote, 'Excellence is not a skill, it is an attitude.'" Jessica has been demonstrating her excellence through her attitude, and we are proud to have her as a student at Connor School. We are all very proud of the progress Jessica has made and will continue to make in her academics here at Connor School. Congratulations, Jessica.
And now Vice Principal Dickerson will come up and tell us the many reasons why the Wallace School selected sixth grader Ms. Sierra Centeno as their Student of the Month.
It is our pleasure to nominate Sierra Centeno as the January 2019 Student of the Month for Wallace Elementary School. Sierra was nominated by Ms. Giampa for being a positive role model for all students to follow. She's very hardworking, helpful, respectful, and kind to anyone she interacts with. Ms. Giampa was quoted in saying, "Sierra is a remarkable learner because she is self-motivated and always challenges herself to be her very best. Keep up the great work, Sierra. We are proud of you." Mr. Shannon stated, "Sierra's character, poise, and kind demeanor makes her a wonderful choice for our Student of the Month for the new year. She exudes positive energy every time I see her. I was happy to see she was nominated to be Student of the Month for January." Sierra has achieved high honor roll and honor roll throughout her academic career. She is a very responsible, motivated, and passionate student. She comes to school every day with a smile and excitement for learning and a dedication for going above and beyond. Sierra pays close attention to details and makes sure that her daily work is accurate and of the utmost quality. Sierra is a model student who sets a positive example for her peers. She is dedicated to helping her classmates succeed and grow in every way she can. Her work ethic and focus is an inspiration to her classmates. Sierra is very proud of her Latin roots and participated in the Hispanic Heritage Assembly as a salsa dancer. She loves to dance, listen to music, hang with her best friends, and loves homework. Yes, she loves homework. Sierra has aspirations to be a robotics engineer one day. She even has set her sights on the prestigious Stevens School of Technology here in Hoboken. Sierra was extremely honored to receive this recognition and takes great pride in being a student at Wallace School. Sierra gifted Ms. Giampa a handwritten sticky note with a powerful message that Ms. Giampa keeps in her desk drawer and looks at every day. A quote that Sierra lives by, "Every day is a new beginning. Take a deep breath and start again." Thank you, Sierra, for all that you do for the Wallace School community.
And now Principal Abraham will take to the microphone to share about the middle school's choice for Student of the Month, seventh grader Ms. Kendall McDonnell.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month, Kendall McDonnell. Kendall's nomination comes from her humanities teacher, Ms. Rozmester. Ms. Rozmester stated, "Since day one, Kendall has demonstrated outstanding leadership both in and out of the classroom. Kendall is frequently one of the first students to volunteer to present her ideas and opinions. She demonstrates wonderful selflessness and enjoys assisting others. She is a perfectionist in all that she does, and her hard work is certainly paying off." Kendall has been the monthly Class Dojo Prize winner for earning the most positive points for the months of September, October, and December. Well done. Kendall is an asset to the Hoboken Middle School community because she demonstrates a positive attitude in every setting she is in. She is sympathetic, respectful, and diligent. After school, Kendall works equally as hard. She is passionate about the Passport to Learning program where she has excelled in the junior thespians and continues to perfect her writing skills in study halls well. And now for the principal's endorsement. It is my distinct pleasure to award Kendall McDonnell as the Hoboken Middle School Student of the Month. Kendall brings incredible energy to the school each and every day. Kendall is a member of the Isabindi House. The word Isabindi derives from the African heritage and embodies courage. This mantra fits her quite well. Kendall celebrates adversity and demonstrates the ability to overcome any obstacle in her way. She is passionate about her studies and goes above and beyond in every subject area. When the going gets tough, Kendall gets going. That's just who she is. Kendall is an advocate for our PGP program where she participates in Academic B and Bowl on Monday and Tuesday, Law Adventure on Wednesday and Thursday, and Maker Space on Friday each week. She is an active member of the district's theater program and recently showcased her talents in Tina and Tony's Wedding on February 8th, 9th, and 10th through her role as a caterer. Her interests in the arts extend into the middle school's Passport to Learning program where she developed incredible self-expression and public speaking skills. Kendall was one of the several students featured in the Hudson Reporter for her efforts in our Math Infused Cardio Club and its correlation with student achievement. Kendall's energy is infectious and has spread like wildfire among her grade-level peers. I truly admire Kendall's ability to balance academics with a broad range of extracurricular activities. This is truly a great skill to have. These skills have been an integral component in her achievement thus far and will continue to be throughout the duration of her schooling experience. Kendall is the type of student where the sky is the limit. I am confident that she will continue challenging herself and those around her and will continue making Hoboken Middle School the amazing school that it is. Congratulations.
Our last but absolutely never least presenter is Principal Pica Pietra, who will wrap up the Student of the Month honors by telling us all about senior Seren Roman and the many reasons why she is spectacular.
Whenever I think of a student that encompasses everything you would want in a student, Serena Roman is the young lady that comes to mind. Since the day I met her in seventh grade, she has been nothing short of a rock star in my eyes. Her optimism and her ability to create excitement around anything, be it an essay, an ECR, or the upcoming football game, is something you want to clone. She was nominated by Mr. Munoz, who is the advisor of her class, and Mr. Di Bernato, who had the pleasure of working with her on the debate team. Mr. Di stated, "Serena Roman has played an intricate role as a leader and mentor on Hoboken High School's 2019 debate team. Working closely with her teammates, she has facilitated growth and achieved academic success as a lead attorney during the 2019 Hudson County Mock Trial Competition with a quarterfinal victory over McNair High School." Additionally, Serena will be an ambassador representing Spain in St. Peter's 2019 Model United Nations County Competition, as well as a congressional delegate during the 2019 Harvard Model Congress Global Competition held in Madrid, Spain. Ms. Weiner, who has worked with her since the seventh grade adds, "As long as I have known Serena, what has stood out about her is her outgoing nature and ability to converse with anyone and everyone around her. She loves to laugh and smile, and she brings this kind of energy wherever she goes and in whatever she does. It is her bubbly nature. Serena also has a drive to learn and achieve. She takes on challenges and always takes advantage of academic opportunities inside and outside of school." Academically, Serena has chosen to challenge herself four years in high school. She was the first cohort of students in our Project Lead the Way biomedical science pathway and has completed her final course in medical interventions. She has challenged herself in five AP courses in all content areas. While this work does not come easy, it is the tenacity that Serena approaches these subjects with that sets her apart. Academics are not her only strong suit, as she is a member of Hoboken High School Student Council, National Honor Society, Safe and Sound School, Harvard Model Congress, Model United N, UN, Mock Trial Team, Cheerleading Team, Girls Volleyball Team, and Girls Softball Teams. Serena's post-secondary plans include applying to college to Syracuse and Villanova. Serena has been accepted to Florida State University, Seton Hall, Rutgers University, and Ramapo College. When notified about the award, Serena said, "This is an amazing honor, and I could not do it without the faculty and the amazing support system at Hoboken High School." She also added, "A big shout-out. Thanks, Mom." Congratulations to Serena.
Okay, next, we're going to move into the superintendent's report. Okay, first, we'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Bolden, could you please read the statement of compliance?
Sure. This meeting is being held in conformity to the Open Public Meeting Act of NJSA 1046. Proper public notice of the meeting was published in the vocal papers on February 15, 2019. If any board member or member of the public in attendance believes that the meeting is in violation of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the board at a later date on cable TV Channel 77 and Files Channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made available on board docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting, and if the use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business.
Okay, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Can we please take the roll call? Mr. Bolden?
Absolutely. Ms. Katamatory is absent. Ms. Delara?
Here.
Mr. Delatorre?
Here.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Ms. Chana is absent. Mr. Clipfel?
Here.
Ms. McWork is absent. Ms. Takirian is absent. And Ms. Angley?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. Well, congratulations to all of our students who were just recognized, and now once again we'll go into the superintendent's report.
Congratulations to all of our students of the month. At this time, I have two paramount items for my superintendent's report tonight. The first has to do with the New Jersey Monitoring Process, known as CUSAC, and the second is going to be a presentation by our Assistant Superintendent of Schools recognizing our district's activities for Black History Month. So I'm going to begin with the CUSAC monitoring process, and since we have a few members of our Board of Education who are not here this evening, I'm actually going to repeat this report at our next meeting as well. As you know, or most of you know, the New Jersey Department of Education monitors school districts with a tool that's called CUSAC. CUSAC evaluates New Jersey school districts in five areas: personnel, governance, fiscal management, operations, and instruction and program. CUSAC is a fairly intensive process that requires a score of 80 or above in each of the five categories in order to receive a New Jersey Department of Education distinction as high-performing. Looking back historically, in 2008, the Hoboken Public School District passed CUSAC in two out of five categories: in operations and in personnel. The Hoboken Public School District scored a 33 in governance at the time, a 41 in fiscal management, and a 34 in instruction and program. However, from 2008 through the 2014-2015 school year, the district was able to point the ship in the right direction, and the Hoboken Public School District passed and has maintained passing scores in four out of five categories: operations, personnel, fiscal management, and operations. Unfortunately, the thorn in our side and the target of criticism has been in the instruction and program category. Up to this point, the Hoboken Public School District had not been able to achieve high-performing district status because we did not score above an 80 in instruction and program. As indicated earlier, the district's instruction and program score in 2008 was 34. In 2014, the district's score in this category rose to 45. I recall telling the Board of Education when I first arrived in the district in 2015 that it would definitely require a few years of work necessary to increase the instruction and program score, but there was no doubt in my mind that we would in fact earn high-performing status. In 2015, the Hoboken Public School District collectively worked diligently and raised the instruction and program score to 75. In another CUSAC interim review in 2016, the score was raised to a 76. During our last CUSAC interim review in 2017, the score was raised to a 77, and at that point, we scored the most points that we possibly could in the category of instruction and program. What was holding us back was our student achievement test scores from state standardized tests. I'm very proud to announce this evening that the Hoboken Public School District went through another CUSAC interim review in December of 2018 in the area of instruction and program, as that was the one category that we still had not passed. I hinted to everyone at the previous meeting, but it is now an official reality. We did it. The Hoboken Public School District surpassed the percentage mark needed to pass all five categories in the New Jersey CUSAC monitoring areas, and we have received official notification from the New Jersey Department of Education that we are now deemed a high-performing district in the state of New Jersey. So while I'm very proud, this is just the beginning. It legitimizes our work and our commitment and reflects the foundation in which we will all continue to grow. My administrators and staff are fully aware that there's still a lot of work to be done and that we're not going to slow down. We are all dedicated to pushing the rigor factor in all of our schools. We know that the middle school had a little bump in the road last year, but we know that the test scores are going to be completely addressed this year. We're already starting to see it in our edmentum benchmarks and some of the other benchmarks that we're putting into place. We have two major focus areas. One of them is in special education achievement, and the other is to increase our mathematics achievement at the same level that our English Language Arts Achievement has risen to. But we're on it. We all know exactly the areas that we're focused on, and despite that, we're still making significant, significant progress. The fact is, we must celebrate progress each and every step of the way. We're not going to give up until our district is recognized as the premier educational choice and widely referred to as a best practice model. In closing, I congratulate our entire staff, our current and former administrators, our student body, our supportive families, our past and present Board of Education members as well. I could not be more proud to serve this district, and I congratulate everyone for this accomplishment.
Okay, at this time, I don't know if you have anything but we'll move on to...
No, just wow. I'm so impressed and so happy to be part of this, so congratulations.
Yeah, it's been a long road, and I think everybody has worked extremely hard to get from point A to point B, but I don't think anyone doubted that we were going to arrive at the high-performing status designation. So we've made it, and now our goal is to continue on...
So, we've made it, and now our goal is to continue on that path, not to let up at all, and to achieve higher and higher tasks and challenges and obstacles that we'll surpass. So, with that being said, one of the things that I think we're most proud of in the Hoboken School District is that we don't just focus on achieving those benchmarks and those milestones, but we make sure that our curriculum supersedes and expands beyond preparation and test-taking measures. And with that being said, we focus our curriculum on things that are extremely relevant for students, and that includes ensuring that we honor and we celebrate various cultures and our vibrantly diverse student population. So, February is Black History Month, and with that being said, our Assistant Superintendent, Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, is here to present some of the activities and learning experiences that our students have gone through so far this month and what they intend to go through for the remainder of the month as well.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, teachers, and families. I am so honored to share how our district has engaged in the honoring of Black History Month. As many of you know, Black History Month was established in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson, a noted African-American historian, scholar, educator, and publisher. It became a month-long celebration in 1976. It is celebrated in February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. From its inception, primary emphasis was placed on encouraging the coordinated teachings of the history of American Blacks in our nation's public schools. The expansion of Black History Week to Black History Month was first proposed by the leaders of the Black United Students at Kent State University in February of 1969. The first celebration of Black History Month took place at Kent State one year later, in February 1970. In 1976, as part of the United States' bicentennial, the informal expansion of Black History Month was officially recognized by the United States government. President Gerald Ford spoke in regards to this, saying that Americans needed to seize the opportunity to honor the too太多 neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Hoboken Public Schools is proud to share in this video presentation that you will see shortly, the events and activities that students in all of our schools are currently and will be participating in throughout the month of February. The programs put in place by each school community are thoughtful, they are historically stimulating, and they are absolutely relevant. It is also critical to note that the contributions of notable African-Americans is not only reserved for the month of February, but will absolutely be threaded throughout as a constant reminder of the value of these contributions to this great country. Our students will understand the dynamic contributions of African-Americans in all aspects of the American experience. So, we're going to dim the lights. I would ask the board members to come off of the dais so you can absolutely enjoy it.
At this time, I don't know if you have anything but we'll move on to...
No, just wow. I'm so impressed and so happy to be part of this, so congratulations.
Yeah, it's been a long road, and I think everybody has worked extremely hard to get from point A to point B, but I don't think anyone doubted that we were going to arrive at the high-performing status designation. So, we've made it, and now our goal is to continue on that path, not to let up at all, and to achieve higher and higher tasks and challenges and obstacles that we'll surpass. So, with that being said, one of the things that I think we're most proud of in the Hoboken School District is that we don't just focus on achieving those benchmarks and those milestones, but we make sure that our curriculum supersedes and expands beyond preparation and test-taking measures. And with that being said, we focus our curriculum on things that are extremely relevant for students, and that includes ensuring that we honor and we celebrate various cultures and our vibrantly diverse student population. So, February is Black History Month, and with that being said, our Assistant Superintendent, Sandra Rodriguez Gomez, is here to present some of the activities and learning experiences that our students have gone through so far this month and what they intend to go through for the remainder of the month as well.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Dr. Johnson, administrators, teachers, and families. I am so honored to share how our district has engaged in the honoring of Black History Month. As many of you know, Black History Month was established in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson, a noted African-American historian, scholar, educator, and publisher. It became a month-long celebration in 1976. It is celebrated in February to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. From its inception, primary emphasis was placed on encouraging the coordinated teachings of the history of American Blacks in our nation's public schools. The expansion of Black History Week to Black History Month was first proposed by the leaders of the Black United Students at Kent State University in February of 1969. The first celebration of Black History Month took place at Kent State one year later, in February 1970. In 1976, as part of the United States' bicentennial, the informal expansion of Black History Month was officially recognized by the United States government. President Gerald Ford spoke in regards to this, saying that Americans needed to seize the opportunity to honor the too太多 neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every area of endeavor throughout our history. Hoboken Public Schools is proud to share in this video presentation that you will see shortly, the events and activities that students in all of our schools are currently and will be participating in throughout the month of February. The programs put in place by each school community are thoughtful, they are historically stimulating, and they are absolutely relevant. It is also critical to note that the contributions of notable African-Americans is not only reserved for the month of February, but will absolutely be threaded throughout as a constant reminder of the value of these contributions to this great country. Our students will understand the dynamic contributions of African-Americans in all aspects of the American experience. So, we're going to dim the lights. I would ask the board members to come off of the dais so you can absolutely enjoy it.
Okay, moving on to facilities. Ms. Evans?
The Facilities Committee met on February 6th, and the attendants were myself, Ms. Angley, Ms. Chana, Ms. Johnson, and myself. The one point she wanted me to make tonight was on the agenda, item 9.02, resignation of Donna Perez. We just want to wish her well and thank you for all the years of her service. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to facilities. Ms. Evans?
The Facilities Committee met on February 6th, and the attendants were myself, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. McGurk, and Superintendent Johnson. We have five facility requests on the agenda tonight. Two are from the city of Hoboken, and three are from the Hoboken Family Alliance, and these are events that they hold every year in our buildings. The committee also discussed work on the living classroom behind this building, and we were happy to hear that it's in its final stages and should wrap up next month, March. And then also, once the weather is warmer, the playground surface will be topped off. And also, the New Jersey Department of Education requires that the district and all districts submit a school safety plan, and that is due this spring. So, Ms. Gallow is working on that with the principal of each school building, and is also working with the Hoboken Fire Department, the Police Department, as well as the Office of Emergency Management on this plan. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. And next, finance. Mr. Takirian could not be here tonight, so Mr. De La Torre will be providing us with the finance report.
Finance Committee met on Thursday, February 7th, at 6:30 p.m. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Bolden, Ms. Angley, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Takirian, and myself. A few things, well, the committee reviewed all agenda items and recommends all for Board approval. A few things we'd like to specifically call out. As usual, the largest dollar-value bills and claims relate to charter, pre-K provider payments, as well as out-of-district special education placement and related transportation costs. Other bills related to normal business activity, including supplies, repairs, and maintenance, passport-to-learning vendors, electricity, et cetera, make up the remainder. We'd also like to thank the Wallace PTO for their generous donation of admission fees for the second-grader's trip to see Dragons Love tacos in Maine. The committee also discussed the following. The district recently sent out food balance notification letters to parents and guardians with outstanding food service balances. As of 2/7, the district had collected $35,000 in outstanding unpaid balances. The committee discussed ways to improve usage of mealtime to avoid unpaid balances going forward. Also, the middle school is piloting a program replacing plastic or styrofoam containers with fiber-based containers that are compostable. The district will evaluate the product's success and cost of this pilot when considering the switch district-wide in the future. Lastly, discussions continue on the 2019-2020 budget planning that is underway, as well as current-year budget, including viewing various pressures on the budget as well as anticipated state aid funding for 2019-2020 school year. And that is it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from board members? No? President's Report. I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. I'm just so happy with the wonderful news that was delivered recently. I also wanted to let you all know that I attended the Middle School Showcase of Excellence on February 7th. It was a great turnout and a very enthusiastic look into our middle school program. So, thank you to Mr. Abraham for hosting such a spectacular event. On that same night, I also attended the Hoboken Public Education Foundation's Moms Night Out. This event was packed with women throughout the community who support our schools. It was a terrific event. presentations that are going on around in our district. And I am covering for Ms. Kana tonight, so I'm just going to jump right into the governance and personnel report. Let me just pull that up. Sorry, bear with me. The governance and personnel committee met on February 6th at 6:00 PM. In attendance were Ms. Angley, Ms. Kana, Dr. Johnson, and myself. The one point she wanted me to make tonight was on the agenda, item 9.02, resignation of Donna Perez. We just want to wish her well, and thank you for all the years of her service. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to facilities. Ms. Evans?
The facilities committee met on February 6th, and the attendants were myself, Ms. Angley, Ms. Katamatory, Ms. McGurk, and Superintendent Johnson. We have five facility requests on the agenda tonight. Two are from the city of Hoboken, and three are from the Hoboken Family Alliance, and these are events that they hold every year in our buildings. The committee also discussed work on the living classroom behind this building, and we were happy to hear that it's in its final stages and should wrap up next month, March. And then also, once the weather is warmer, the playground surface will be topped off. And also, the New Jersey Department of Education requires that the district and all districts submit a school safety plan, and that is due this spring. So Ms. Gallow is working on that with the principal of each school building, and is also working with the Hoboken Fire Department, the Police Department, as well as the Office of Emergency Management on this plan. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. And next, finance. Mr. Kirian could not be here tonight, so Mr. De La Torre will be providing us with the finance report.
Finance committee met on Thursday, February 7th at 6:30 PM. In attendance were Dr. Johnson, Mr. Bolden, Ms. Angley, Ms. McGurk, Mr. Kirian, and myself. Few things, well, the committee reviewed all agenda items and recommends all for board approval. A few things we'd like to specifically call out. As usual, the largest dollar value bills and claims relate to charter, pre-K provider payments, as well as out-of-district special education placement and related transportation costs. Other bills related to normal business activity, including supplies, repairs, and maintenance, passport-to-learning vendors, electricity, et cetera, make up the remainder. We'd also like to thank the Wallace PTO for their generous donation of admission fees for the second grader's trip to see Dragons Love tacos in Maine. The committee also discussed the following. The district recently sent out food balance notification letters to parents and guardians with outstanding food service balances. As of 2/7, the district had collected $35,000 in outstanding unpaid balances. The committee discussed ways to improve usage of mealtime to avoid unpaid balances going forward. Also, the middle school is piloting a program replacing plastic or styrofoam containers with fiber-based containers that are compostable. The district will evaluate the product's success and cost of this pilot when considering the switch district-wide in the future. Lastly, discussions continue on the 2019-2020 budget planning that is underway, as well as current year budget, including viewing various pressures on the budget as well as anticipated state aid funding for 2019-2020 school year. And that is it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from board members? President's report. I just want to reiterate what I said earlier. I'm just so happy with the wonderful news that was delivered recently. I also wanted to let you all know that I attended the Middle School Showcase of Excellence on February 7th. It was a great turnout and a very enthusiastic look into our, our middle school program. So thank you to Mr. Abraham for hosting such a spectacular event. On that same night, I also attended the Hoboken Public Education Foundation's Moms' Night Out. This event was packed with women throughout the community who support our schools. It was a terrific event, and I thank HPE for all they do for our students. And last, but certainly not least, I wanted to congratulate the Hoboken High School students and staff who participated in Tony and Tina's wedding. I have to say, it was a great time, and I don't think I've laughed, laughed that hard in quite, quite a while. So congratulations to Ms. Miller and to the entire cast and crew. That's my report. So I guess now we move on to public comments on agenda items.
There are no public speakers on the agenda items.
So we'll move into consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
A second.
Are there any items to discuss or poll? No? Okay. Mr. Bolden, could you call the roll call?
Ms. Delara?
Yes.
Mr. De La Torre?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Clipfel?
Yes.
Ms. Angley?
Yes.
The motions pass.
Okay. Moving on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items.
There were no public speakers signed up.
Okay. All right. That concludes our meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.